Call this meeting ordered that January the third, 2022. Mayor Kinzlo is ill, so y'all should talk to me tonight. Mr. Terry, can you call Rose?
Yes. Casey Brown?
Here.
Ralph Baker?
Here.
Ralph Powell?
Here.
Denton, Harris, Adams, and King?
Cheers.
California.
Y'all with Tamara, we'll say prayer. Daniel James will lead the prayer. Pleased to lead this fall in, Chief of Court Brown.
Our heavenly Father, we are again thankful for another day of life that you blessed us with. We are thankful, Father, for all the many blessings of this life that we enjoy. We pray, Father, for those of our city who are ill. We pray, Father, for this pandemic, that it would be brought to a close as soon as possible. Father, we pray for all of our residents, that they will be healthy, that they will be prosperous in the new year. Be with us as we go through this meeting. Help us to be wise and make wise decisions on behalf of the people. Christ stand, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I get a firm footprints? Decent for that to mean?
Make that motion. Second.
Motion, second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Recognition and acknowledgements, we don't, aren't going to have any. I don't know. Committee reports, I'm sure y'all got all those. Got any questions on state case on here?
But he didn't turn in a report or anything.
We're just going to skip right on through this stuff, so. Heard it was supposed to be.
Kenny did tell me today.
Yeah, I just told him that the reports are in there.
He has life started.
Parks and way to harvest. Everybody signed up for the citizens forum, so we'll just put them down on the financial report.
What I'm going to do, because this is year end and I was gone all last week, doing the year end entries now. You have a financial report on your tablets, but I gave you a key financial data sheet.
A lot of musical chairs.
Mike's normal seat is.
Somehow it's yours.
He's holding him sitting down there by Daniel.
Give him a bit of a seat.
Jeff, that's not all of you. It was complex everywhere. In your packet, you have a key financial data sheet. This is normally what I, um, talk to you about every week, I mean, every month. The first is the city sales and use taxes will be for the actual end of the year. You'll notice that we budgeted 10%. We ended cumulative growth for 2021 at 12, which is 2% above growth. Our same period 2021 over 2020 was 10.4%. So we had a very good collections submission in December, more so than the previous December. The county sales tax growth, we budgeted 5.6%. We ended up at 15.4%. That's a county sales tax growth that we've budgeted at 9.8%. Same period over, December over December was 18.8%. It's good all the way around from a December perspective. A lot of that's probably, I'm sure you're going to see a big jump in online sale purchases, and that's what probably contributed to that for the people that were shopping for Christmas. Although the Christmas impact doesn't impact us largely until February. Usually it's January a little bit, but February most. So we'll see that Christmas hit or pickup come in the month of February. AMP budgeted growth, we budgeted 8%. The cumulative growth was 13.35%. The AMP above average of the average growth, we had a 5.35% above our budget. Average monthly sales growth, which was the divided by 1% looking at what the prepared food sales did as far as revenue to the city entities that contribute to the AMP tax. They're up from 2018 to now, 45.08%. Cash flows wise, we had a net decrease in cash for the month of December of 560. A lot of spending took place in the last month of the year. Year-to-date, net increase in cash was 2.4 million. Current fund balance for all funds, end of the year at 15,796. Percent increase was 18.26%. The total revenue, net income, all city was revenue-wise was 17,707. Total expense, 14,900. Our net income for 2021 is 2.8 million. But that's been influenced by the ARPA money, which is sitting in there because it's revenue. We're, I backed out the ARPA funds, 975,000. So our adjusted net income outside of an extraordinary item is 1.8 million, 1.85. And a percent increase when you use the adjusted number is actually 8.05% from the previous year. Capital expense and improvement actual for the expense-wise was 1.87 million. The capital expense budget was 5.3 million, so we spent 35.18%. Now, just to break that out a little bit more, the capital expense was closer, it was about 70% spend. The capital improvements is where the actual lag is. It's in the improvement projects, which tend to last multiple years. And that's the key data in a nutshell. Like I said, you have the financials more detail on those tablets, but now it's all unnoted and it's very preliminary. I'm still doing year-end entries.
Thank you, Tom. Soon we'll have an agenda addition.
Don't tell me.
All right, we're running into the whole business.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Terry, the first item on the agenda I was planning and building is the ordinance repealing or replacing ordinance 2010 over two. Commander, I'd like to table this again. Robert and I were working on this, and Robert had a need replacement, kind of put him behind. And so I talked to them today, and they asked if we could table this again this month, and I'll bring it back to us next month.
Make a motion to be tabled.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Two is going to be the West Orange Commission.
We're tabling that for the.
Yeah, that needs to be tabled. Mayor brought that back on after it's been presented again, but.
I remember I know that you had it.
Um, I guess we need a motion to table that.
I'll make a motion to table that, um. Second.
Motion, second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. Yes.
Number three, the animal control ordinance, repealing, replacing ordinance, third reading.
This is Casey. No changes since last?
No changes, just what we talked about last week.
Housekeeping.
Right, my brother.
For the reading. Are there questions by you either?
We feel like this is done, right? I mean, you feel like this is ready to be.
Yes.
Good question. I'll make a motion and put it on its third reading.
Not a change from last, y'all didn't make any more changes.
That's right.
I'll make the motion and put it on its third reading, but I won't.
Second.
Motion, second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing ordinance 16-17 and all other ordinance in conflict, they're going authorizing and regulating the keeping and removal of animals, domestic animals, creatures in the city of Greenwood, and all other necessary.
Uh, move on here. Number four is the police. One I'm seeing here, this is a, we typed it up from the last meeting, so I'm reading the, type of beginning and end, I guess, the bullet run here.
Right.
Guess we better have a motion to put that police.
I'll make that motion.
My second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Uh, sunny here, getting cleaning the ordinance, redoning, redones property.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Terry, this is the third reading for the property located on Fern and Joplin. Uh, the purpose to build the cottage house up there.
Sonny, we worked at trying to get an increased roadway there on the Fern side.
The roadway is there.
And how wide is that roadway then?
Uh, 27 feet.
What's the roadway is for?
Local street, 27 feet.
Well, sure, it's never want to go down it.
It's not, it's got the roadways there. Roadway is a different matter.
Roadway for a local street is 27?
Yes.
What's the roadway on Collector Street, which is what Bell Road would be, right?
Daniel, I, I, do you remember offhand Chad?
I think offhand it's 40, um, 40 or 50, but I was thinking for a local, it'd be more like 25.
I think with our new, with the.
With the changes.
One that we're changing, I think the new ones are going to be 27 feet. And I think that one right now, like Chad said, is probably 25, I mean, the old ordinance. I'm bringing a new ordinance to you guys next month that will update all of our street specifications to bring them into current fire code and also the construction part of it as far as some actions. Things like that Chad and myself and Stuart have been working on, and I'll edit it for you next month.
Is Bell Road considerate? Is it designated to be a collector's street?
Uh, Daniel, I.
Because it's not considered one now.
Yeah, but, uh.
I mean, in so-called master plans and some other.
Yeah, that main street, Daisy Street, would all be actual, although it would be considered a collector's street.
That's the street that I'd be the most concerned about in this, is that we have proper roadway, or easement, I guess.
And to the streets that are going east and west, the pavement with, our, it's the Fern Street that AC is concerned about, you know, we have the right away, but the street is, is probably one of the first streets that brings whatever I have.
Fern's north and south, right?
And so is the existing road then, about how wide is it right now?
Terry, do you remember, was it 12 feet?
Does existing road is 12 feet?
So all the right away on that must be on the, on the east side of Fern, right?
It would probably vary, you know, depending on.
There's a house on the west side there that's close.
Yeah, there's a lot of close houses down there, especially when you get down towards Evergreen. Uh, the two houses there are across the street from each other. Uh, if, if we took our easement and put in a 27-foot street, we would be in both of, in one of the carport, the other would be right up to the rally.
So Fern's leaking?
Yeah.
You're saying that's on the west, the west side of the street?
Both sides.
Both sides? So you're saying if we, if we did the 27 feet, it would?
Well, the right away is there, and the right away is an imaginary line. The, the pavement is, is tackled.
So when he, when you, when you have that right away designated, whatever they're building here now can't be built on that, correct? I mean, so we're, if we wanted to widen Fern Street.
We could, we have.
Next year, this piece of property you.
We'd have to deal with the older properties there that, uh.
But not this one?
No. We'd have to deal with the older properties that were built without any specifications or any approval of the building, when they were built, but like I said, there was some pretty old construction before that happened. So what we're asking for is a recent.
I'll make a motion and we place this on its third reading, but I'll.
Sounds like it's time to build some furniture.
So we're going to turn this down because of Bell Road?
I'm just, no, I'm just.
Ken, Todd.
Farm Street.
Ordnance fails for the 27, so it gets a little bit over. So what we suggest we do is bring this back, if that's what people want to do.
Sonny, do you have anything?
Yeah. I'm just asking what we can do to try to fix it, if that's, if that's the problem.
Build a road. Build a 27-foot road, have the people move their carport, have the people on the other side with the garage understand that the road is going to be right next to their, within five foot of their garage and going about it. And I don't know, like I said, this is a non-legal situation in an older part of town that we're paying for somebody else's mistakes, but I can't believe that we're going to hold that down progress and construction that we put in sewer lines for, to provide this progress because of an old road there, and it's one road, it's a one road going north and south. We've got fire hydrants on, on the other corners to say, you know, that we're doing this for fire protection.
I thought it was like fire protection's problem, and clearly the road's problem.
And so we, you know, we had talked about turning that into a one-way street.
So we, y'all discussed any of that at all?
Yeah, we talked about it, we talked about it at the planning commission, and everybody agrees that there's things that we could do, like I say, like a one-way street. We've got several, several streets in town that, that would benefit, I believe, from a one-way street, Chicago being another, Beach over in, off Old Hackett and Fern Street. But that is a, a street department, and in moderation, decision. I deal with rezoners and.
I, I, I'm just trying to figure maybe a, what that.
You know, that's, that's my only suggestion, and, and, you know.
Well, that's what I'd like to see, some solution to this, because I just don't want to create another Chicago or a Bay Area situation, you know, when, when we have the opportunity right now to kind of fix it, even if it is for a one block.
Well, the council can, can instruct a street department, build a street, or turn it into a one-way street, that's.
Chad, has anybody talked to you all about different options for that? No, first I heard about it was the last council meeting. Thanks, Senator.
And Daniel Muhammad Collector, the right ways are 60 feet, so it'll be 30 feet on the side of the center on the road.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kenny?
This is the district ordinance that we had on last month for Park Street. And I had a note here, I'm reading Ralph provided up last month about, um, section two dash six, about, about the snakes, the deadly poisonous, the, the being killed on sight. That's a little harsh, unless, should that's.
Then you work for the game of pitch, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Because that's a legal landmark unless they're posing a threat, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we need to reword that.
Where's that in?
Um, section two dash six.
Do you have any suggestions?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll review it if I've got.
Oh, you've got some.
Some additional.
Okay, okay, great, okay.
If you'd like to send those to me, I can make those changes in this ordinance and then indicate the changes next time.
I'll just give you this.
I mean, I can make those available on here for everybody to see.
Sure, yes, yes.
But this is for the second reading, so.
Right.
We can go ahead and do what we need to do, and then try to make those changes, and then.
If anybody sees anything else that they don't like, they come down there, just make sure that she or I know what we can make.
I'll make a motion and we put this on the second reading. My second.
Motion, second.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
The ordinance adopting regulations for conduct in public parks in the city of Greenwood.
Number seven, all business planning, ordinance to rezone 2.3 South Cooper from R1 to R3 for second reading. I'm making up a question, two of your, Terry.
Seven, Powell.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Terry, this is the second reading for the rezon, uh, 223 South Cooper for the apartment complex that is proposed on that project. We went over it last month. I think you guys were impressed, as I was, with the design of the project, and, uh, I'd like to put that on for the second reading.
I'll make that motion. Second. Motion, second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
And I warned this amending ordinance number 18-09 for the purpose of rehabbing certain property, permitting officials on their map to see if they agree with. It looks like it's missing some of the title. And for other purposes, I'm going to add that. That's it.
That's all business, son, you're filling up. It's made.
Uh, this is a request to approve a latency replacement for planning commissioner John Deckord resigned from the planning commission, and I have looked at several applications and different people, and if he can't clean, if Randy can't clean, that lives through Parkway, I think you have a copy of his resume, he expressed an interest in serving on the planning commission. I think he'd make a very good addition to the commission, and she could defer it from the council.
I'll make that motion approved.
Is the council, or planning commission, to have the vote on this for? Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Sonny, how long has he lived here?
Uh, I think five years. Just curious. Yeah, he, he, you know, he wants to get involved with the city and all that, and a very, very nice man, and I think he'll bring a good addition to the committee.
Seems pretty good for a South Side graduate.
We went all over.
We're still in business, we got fire, we're doing some surprising business with Locktree Fire Fighter, Colby Graham. We do this because we have some of the guys that actually work, have their own business that work for the city.
You can't, or?
Ah, you can't, it don't matter. Everybody here pretty much knows what it is.
Just being able to do business with the CNH, well. It's like we have four regular garage doors. Several of them.
We are under emergency because individual has already been paid, so.
I make that motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
What did you make the motion for?
I'm, I'm, I want to accept the.
Put it on our free month out?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
I'll read the title, an ordinance authorizing the city of Greenwood to nut business with Colby Graham, DVA, CNH elector, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Make motion, wait, second, third reading. Second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
I have a motion to be dropped, I remember, Mr. Tom.
Second.
Forward, it's first, I apologize, I apologize for everything.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Denton?
Yes.
That would be the first. Make a motion, we have to.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Denton?
We'll move on to number 10, Mayor here, but I bet we have this, it's the, the revolution to adopt the 2022 procedural laws.
It's all the same. Change that changed three years.
Everything's the same as the last probably five years. There's inside, you know, a little bit of your breath, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt this revolution, Mr. Mayor, again.
Is there? Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're going to move down to the left. Uh, confirmation, AP Commission member replacement, I think, how do you feel about this?
Who is the manager?
Yeah.
That's the conference guy.
Yeah.
I told you, that's the left.
Dusenberry?
I'm glad you could hear the name.
Well, I.
It's.
David Dusen.
Dusenberry?
And he manages the Greenwood McDonald's. And I contacted him, and he is happy as ever.
Maybe he's polished, so.
He's real nice.
Okay, so AP Commission would like to appoint this commissioner, Nathan Dusenberry. So we brought it to the council for confirmation. His number service, and he manages the Greenwood McDonald's.
Can you replace him?
Patrick Simmons.
Which used to manage the Greenwood McDonald's, so he's no longer qualified.
He's enforcement now.
So we're asking.
I'll make that motion, we confirm that point.
I'll make that motion, we confirm that appointment. Second. And motion to say-
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Cal, you might, yeah.
Uh, Charlie, do they have these on their packets?
Yes, I mean, are exactly in their packet, I printed that one.
It's in their packet, okay, good. It's time we're gonna be going over some of the highlights of the audit with the water bureau. The reason we're doing that now is because we do have some departments to get the audit, uh, after it's been reviewed, that we discussed with the city council, to the bond holders and to some of our debt, uh, holders. And, uh, we didn't want to delay this, so because there was no reason to December of the Water, wastewater commission, we're gonna do the reverse order and we're gonna discuss this with them, uh, they don't most of anybody by now, at their next meeting at the end of this month. So, the first thing I want to go over is there's a letter from the mayor and the city council that talks about significant audit findings. These, this is very standard language, the first thing that wanted, I wanted to point out was, the key item would be if there was any difficulties that he experienced in performing the audit, uh, we brought all the material to him, we discussed things over the phone, we electronically submitted whatever documents needed, and of course, he had no, um, in kind of note that he's in, performing the audit. And, uh, we were happy about that, he's very easy to work with. And, um, the other was disagreements of management, if there were any, he would have disclosed that, and he pleased to report that we didn't disagree on any key material or any immaterial, uh, nature of the audit itself with any other matters, so those are the key things, if there was any issues, you would have seen it in the note in that language. Um, the next report that he altered, the next letter, is the one talking about internal controls. And the first thing that you'll notice in there is segregation duties, as you will hear when we discuss with you the audit from legislative audit for the general side. The segregation duties, um, is gonna be something due to our size that we have, our staffing, that we're doing everything we can to mitigate it. While the water wastewater audit acknowledges our mitigating controls, legislative audit is less, um, embracing of some of the mitigating controls that we have in place, more so opting for what they have as more formality and bodies would help. So, the, the good thing is the legislative audit is, we have, it's always gonna be a, it's gonna be a supplementary finding and not a reported finding, because they understand that we're doing best we can with the size of staffing that we have in the city. In his report, he writes management has already established controls to limit incompatible duties given the staff size. We have, we do have mitigating controls. Um, one of the other things that he mentions was there's still, there was a, remember this is a 2020 audit, in 2020, uh, for the year 2020, in 2021. The accounts receivable balance that we record on our books is different than the accounts receivable subsidiary ledger that's recorded on our systems. But in 2020, we, oh, 2021, excuse me, we changed over our system to a new accounting software. We knew that was coming and we wanted to see how the transition and the conversion weighed out, so that we knew what numbers we were gonna be dealing with in order to make the corrections and the true up and the accounts receivable and the metered cost payable. He makes mention of that in this report, as you'll see at the very end, he says that in addition to new building software, fully integrated with current general ledger software as purchased and should alleviate this matter, we are maintaining that now, we get much more detailed reporting from the water office and we can match our system numbers with their receivables, subsidiary ledger, as well as the metered cost payable. We, uh, when we did the conversion, we found a lot of issues with the old software, the R B S system, and, uh, this system has pretty much addressed almost all of those, uh, anomalies and nuances that we, uh, were painstakingly muddling our way through until the new software system took place. One of the things that's in here, though, I have not had an opportunity to talk with the water office, uh, water, uh, commission yet, and we will, is that 2016 bond construction fund, you know, that has been resolved, and so we still have $28,000, it's still gaining interest on our books, $28,000 new recommendation we put towards, uh, another capital project that meets the terms of the bond in order to get that off our books, it's $28,000 sitting there in cash account that they're holding, that we probably should utilize, is what is basically what we're doing. So, we'll have some discussions around that with the water wastewater commission once I do this report. As far as the independent auditors report is concerned, before they get to the numbers, the opinion was unqualified, it is called a clean conviction. They're, you know, they're, we represented, or they say that, uh, the financial statements represent in all material respects, so, uh, there's nothing in there that would cause any alarm or any concern, the numbers are, uh, in all material aspects, reported correctly. And then he provides you a balance sheet, one of the things that I always go over on page three of the actual report itself, under assets, I like to look at where our accumulated depreciation is as a percentage of our asset value. I have 2016, we were at 31% basically in 2016 and 17, uh, depreciative, depreciated assets, right now we're at 35.8, so the assets we have are somewhat getting older, and that's what that's indicating. And usually you kind of watch that because down the road, the recent capital expenditure purchases, they're gonna need the recommendation of budgets. Because as these assets, equipment get old, we're gonna have to replace them. So, the percentage of depreciation kind of gives me a hint as to whether, when and where, when that's gonna start needing to be addressed. So, if we start getting up to the 40 to 50% range half of the value depreciated, we're gonna be looking at some replacements assets. That's different than the capital improvement projects, which are the projects that were probably improved on that. As far as the liabilities is concerned, the change in net position, 2018 to 19, we changed by half a million dollars, from 2019 before you, our net position grew 1.3 million dollars pay level, so, um, the liability and net position, liabilities, net position shows that it's, uh, in a healthy position right now as far as it's concerned. Uh, one of the things that we do want to look at is the net income, we realize that the new money from city sales and use tax will cover our operations, uh, one of the things that the water systems, water office, water, um, the water department and the sewer department do that's different than the rest of the, uh, other entities that use city sales and use tax, is that they do not pay directly from the city sales and use tax. City sales and use tax is, uh, we write a check back to the water, uh, water O and M and the sewer O and M to cover city sales and use tax expenditures. Everything runs through the water and the sewer department and we pay back, or funnel a transfer back to those departments for those items that you've approved for city sales and use tax, you'll see that in their budgets. So, after the transfer, their net loss became a net profit or an increase in net position by 3.97% over last year, so they're, they are favorable, they are strong, uh, the net position after the transfer of the city sales and use tax. Our cash position increased 67% between last year and this year. Apparently, we've got a debt that's, uh, we, uh, we're getting rid of a debt for the sewer department in April of this year, so that's gonna help even more the financial position of the sewer department. They're gonna become $150,000 more profitable this year and $200,000 plus every year after that, because the bond may retire. We go to the notes, just to get through some of the more, I think the notes are concerned, but I would be concerned with, page nine of the report for the notes to the financial statements is depository accounts. Everyone knows that we, based on where our monies are and being held, we have, uh, exceed our F D I C coverage for insurability of those accounts. What we have done is fully collateralized them with our investments into those, uh, amounts that are over. So, all of our funds in the water sewer, all of water sewers funds, it says that are in the note, are fully collateralized with securities by the banks that are pledged against these excess deposits. So, if the banks were to go in there, our funds are secured, we don't have to worry about that $150,000 or the fact that we've gotten $6 million in the bank, we're collateralized more than 105% of the total, so. We need to happen to them, we're, our money's secured. Um, as far as the next page ten is concerned, compensated absences, usually watch that number because it lets us know whether the vacations and holidays, anything that's accrued are being, not holidays, vacations at certain time are being utilized, or are they, is that dollar amount of liability creeping up and it shows that the staff is working more and taking time off or time less. In this case, the value of the dollar amount of our, uh, liabilities for compensated absence has dropped in 2020, means that in 2020, more time was taken for the vacations, but see that they were taking it and they were getting a payout. So, the amount has dropped. Uh, the next thing is the, uh, long-term debt. Again, the, at the end of 2020, there was a value of 326,000 in debt, uh, sewer bond that is being paid off right now, it's four months, we got January, February, March, I mean, the final payment appears out in April, so, uh, our debt would then only be the water bond, or, sorry, $2,016 sewer revenue bond will be the only debt that pay out that there's going. We also talked to them, and I think that mentioned to you that there's an opportunity in the future for, it's callable now, and we actually could, we could do a refund, refinance, we, if we have that, uh, base in the hole, we want to use it for, uh, future debt project that would be a significant, uh, cost. We, we have the opportunity to refinance, refund that and, uh, continue that, uh, collateralized bond, you know, putting it for a refund, it's sort of like what we did with the bond for the police station. Um, our long-term debt, it does, we do have the covenant still in place because the covenant is not attached to the sewer bond, it's attached to the water bond, but it goes for all debt that the water sewer department incurs. So, with the fact that that decision was made in August of 2020 to reserve the, the funds that we had, excess funds, restricted for the retirement of potentially the sewer bonds, we no longer have that issue with the covenant of the bond, and he makes note of that in this page 12 for that, because in the past, we were not meeting the bond requirement for that covenant of 110%, our revenue has to be 110% of all of our debt, or from only water system, I mean, we were down in the seventies at one point, and either you raise your rates and do something to generate more income over your expenses, you cut your expenses, you increase revenues, or you do something like a feasance, which is what I did, in order to, uh, address this without any kind of, uh, material impact to the rates for the customer to consume. And so, he makes note of that, and that is welcome sight, and then the 2005 sales tax revenue fund, he's showing the growth from that 1% city sales and use tax, 2019, it was a million two, 2020, which was the first of the COVID years, it went to 1 million six, and in 2021, just right now, from the end of December, we're 1 million seven four, forty-five. So, if you want to know what does that 1% sales tax bring in for water systems revenue, uh, sewer revenue, it's 1.7 million dollars for, way now going forward. And no real major subsequent events, I will let you know that our net income increased after transfers from city sales and use tax are brought over, um, we are at 1.3 billion combined, water sewer combined, and an increase plus 561,000 dollars since 2019 this year. 2019, our net income was 793,000, we're 1.34. We will be looking at possibly entertaining rate increases down the road because there's a new legislation that's going into effect that's gonna require us to have studies done, so, if, if they do, it probably will only impact the sewer side, that's what they're leaving right now, that's, that was your least probable, there hasn't been a sewer rate increase in years, so. And that's pretty much it, is there any questions on either number you see, you can either look them out or contact me, uh, anytime of the week.
Is it legislation, is it passed legislation?
I haven't seen where it's passed, but everybody's telling me it is, but I talked with our auditors and they said that, um, he said he was not aware that that thing actually went into effect. And, uh, we're gearing up as though it will this year, and sometimes this year they tell us it is, um, we'll have to go through that, those hoops, which I think one of the things that we have to do is study, an annual study of your rates, so. And the, the reason is, there's a lot of smaller communities that are-
They're financially healthy.
Exactly, and I'm kind of wondering about a first-class city and where we are, if there's a threshold that if we fall below, we have to have that, I mean, I can't see them just shooting a fly at the wall of Bazooka, type of, of approach, but that's what everybody's telling me, so they're not here, we'll discuss it at our next meeting for water wastewater, just to make sure, but, uh, I, I haven't seen anything that definitively told me it's in place.
You mentioned, uh, about the, our existing loan, about possibly repurposing it, you know, is, is that something that you recommend, knowing that, you know, it would look like if they're gonna rate rates, you know, the next year and stuff, that-
Right now, it's favorable because each, the, the rates of interest for a bond is really at what I thought. We are looking at possibly in the second quarter of this year, 2022, that there'll be some, some increase in the bond market rates, that's gonna be good for the investors, for the people that want to put money in the bond markets because they're gonna get one back. Right now, they're, they're investing, but they're getting very rule on that money, so there's a push for the, for Raymond James and the people at our, um, bond financiers or bond management financing to have us refinance that, but right now, our rates are favorable, and if we were to refinance right now, it would only save a hundred thousand dollars over life of our remaining, remaining life of that bond. That's not worth it, not for the $3 million or the 1.3 million or whatever is that's left. We would need something a lot more significant, because if you refinance, they have an opportunity to renegotiate the terms, and they could lock us out, uh, they could do just what they did with the sewer and say, well, you have fewer callable options, they, you have no callable options because you're, you're already so low that we want to guarantee the investor instead of the term, which is what happened. So, I talked with them and they said that's a good decision, they're, they have to tell us that it's available, but, uh, when I told them that we ought to get out of that, then they said that was a good call, but wait until it gets to be, um, very, you, if you do refinance, one of the things you could be communicating to the bond market, uh, investors and to the debt holders, is you have a need for cash, because when you refinance, you're doing it primarily with the cash flow, we don't have a cash flow this year, so we didn't have to do that. Too many negatives.
I just, uh, would like to have a motion to accept this as presented for-
I'll make a motion, that would be accepted. Water should run. Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel? Ms. Terry?
Yes.
I'll need kind of zip through that, so, uh, department reports and questions, a few of the department heads here, so, anybody got any questions ready to ask? No questions? Or, calcified? Anybody got anything?
I just got a comment, 'cause it's not even eight, eight o'clock, it's Mayor Pearl Tam rocks, man. Let me take this part of it.
I love the fact that-
We're gonna start a land series for Mayor Tam.
Well, there ain't no, if there's, if there's no more questions, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna spare anybody much stuff. We would, we do need to keep, uh, our prayers, you know, the peace, on the weather and plus with other people.
They don't sound too good, so.
Well, mine's not, it's, I, I tore out a bunch of mold out of, out of a place, out of what you were working on, and, uh, Christmas morning, I woke up, I think it was growing in my head, so, but I haven't felt bad at all since I stopped up and we didn't, it was bad deal.
Yeah, we actually had a second thing happen, but it was hay and dust.
You should send this mess. I talked to very, very much to Doug in September.
I talked to Derek, he wants to Doug, he's having a horrible, he's not been to the doctor yet.
Derek, Doug?
Doug, he sounded bad, bad. And so, anybody that has a phone, he's texting, telling me to give you the rest to the doctor.
I like what you told them.
He sounds horrible, he said he was, but I got the tone, he's quite good to me. But he didn't sound horrible.
We have to appreciate y'all looking through this, we'll, we'll make some, some other motion to Jerry.
Make that one.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Doug.